At nine o'clock. Did I get that right? I want to do it again. Good morning. It's eight thirty and we'll call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for item not listed. Is there any individuals that would like to come forward? There are none approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections?
I would like to add just a be it noted item, maybe after the, under routine business, after approval of the claims. This morning I set out in your packet of information, there's a list of BCOAC volunteers. And in order to cover those individuals on the county's work comp policy, they need to be listed in our minutes as a be it noted item. So I would like to include that.
Consent agenda items, approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personal action notices, approval of the human services report.
We have approval.
And a motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Routine business, approval of claims.
I'm opposed.
And a motion of Krogman, second by Miller.
There is one change to the highway department claims and that was in front of you this morning as well in your paper clipped packet of information on the top there.
Call the roll please.
Miller? Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, volunteer list. Stacy wanted to just read this or just be it noted?
Nope, it's just to be it noted that that's, I received that list from Robert Contreras, the director at the BCOAC to be listed in our minutes.
Department head reports. Bob, would you like to start?
Good morning.
Morning.
First of all, we started the month off by doing ordinance review with the deputy state's attorney. It's mainly Richard, I've been sitting on him when I'm here. I did attend the November eighth Veterans Treatment Court graduation in Sioux Falls and that went excellent. It's good to see that they're helping veterans out. November ninth, we had a PPCC slash pod meeting over at the East Fire Station. That day I also had a NIMs webinar. They are taking the incident command system, which we've all been trained on and they're tweaking it quite a bit. So we'll have to, once they get the new materials out, we may start to have some ICS training again. This is a recap, wouldn't hurt to have a reminder anyway for the county and the city that would like to participate. November twelve to sixteen, I was, I did attend the International Association Emergency Managers Conference. Some interesting things came out. Of course, we had had subjects such as the Las Vegas shooting, some civil unrest. But one thing I started looking at was the economic development. They had a session on economic development and post disaster recovery in a place called Greensburg, Kansas. Greensburg, Kansas got leveled by a F four, F five tornado a few years ago, literally leveled, just took the town off the face of the earth. So they came back in to rebuild the town and they started using all the newest technology that they could to rebuild the town, Green City and all that. Well, what they're finding out is some of that, just because you build it, don't mean they come, just the opposite of the baseball fields. So that's something to look at if we ever do have a major disaster in Brookings County is when we decide to rebuild, you know, get the input from the people, don't necessarily get the input only from the experts. You need the input from the people on the ground is what I took out of the whole session. It's one thing to have everything quote unquote green and all that, but the people have to want to live there. And what they're finding out, people literally splitting, half of them's going to one major town to the right and the other half's going to the major town to the left and they're not coming back to their small town. And a lot of stuff on this opioid stuff and I understand at the last commission meeting, the sheriff said he was getting some of the injectors rather cheap through a grant and the recommendation is get as many as he can because the antidotes for the opioids, they're starting to go up in price quite a bit and the Center for Disease Control is really concerned over that. And the reason the Center for Disease Control gave a session on the opioids is because it just spread. You've got the drugs and then all of a sudden now you got hepatitis and you got all this other stuff starting to spread out from the thing. So it's getting to be a major crisis. Then the rest of it, a lot of cyber stuff obviously, and they're saying on the cybersecurity, it's not when they're going to hit us, it's how they're going to hit us, or not if, but when, I guess would be a better way. And November sixteenth, there was a local emergency planning committee meeting held at Dectronics. November twentieth, yesterday I attended the pre-legislative briefing at the Swatell Center. Yesterday, we also had a joint jurisdiction area review committee and that committee is complete now and will start meeting, I want to say second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. And that'll go on, I guess, until they shut her down. Chairman is councilperson Kidweiler and the vice chairperson, I believe, is Commissioner Bartley, if I'm not mistaken. And December twelve to fifteenth, the U.S. Department of Transportation rescheduled a meeting. Right now, they are waiting for federal funding to come, so we'll see if that even occurs. And that's, what's not on my list is I'm in contact with Madera Township that drainage matter, I haven't heard back from them yet. I'm still waiting to hear from McHexum. I've been informed that Banners does have some information that we'll be able to use. So once we let the contract, once we decide to do a contract and, you know, we don't want to go on our own and then have the township go on their own or anything, once we get ready to do the work, we'll start moving on that. And last but not least, the zoning board issues conditional use permits, which is isn't nothing new. And in our conditional use permits, it states, activity must be performed within three years or it becomes invalid. In the past, I, as director of the planning and zoning and now county development, I would be the one that would make the determination was a conditional use permit started or did it become null and void and we send letters out and tell them they had to reapply. There's been some questions on one of our conditional use permits on our mining facility and I guess I need input from the county commission. Do we want to continue with my, with the way we've been doing it in the past or do we want to put the burden onto the planning and zoning board to determine if a conditional use has been started or not?
Normally, I would say that Bob, as our zoning official, should just do what he normally does. But there's a little snafu in our procedure as relates to this particular issue in that it was on the agenda for our last planning and zoning meeting, but all it said was discussion on conditional use oh five and whatever the number is, and it didn't say what it was regarding. And that wasn't properly noticed because I had citizens that called me before the meeting and asked me if we would be discussing this particular issue at our meeting. I looked at the agenda and even I, as a commissioner sitting on planning and zoning, couldn't tell that we were going to be discussing that. And so I said at our meeting, I said, this isn't properly noticed. I told citizens they didn't need to come tonight because it wasn't on our agenda. Now, since that time, we have had a conversation with First District on the proper way to maybe procedurally handle this type of thing and probably a conversation with planning and zoning where planning and zoning gives an advisory opinion to the zoning officer on how they will vote in the future, should this matter come in front of them, is not a proper way to handle zoning issues. We shouldn't be giving advisory opinions because when we actually have a public hearing on that issue, there might be things that come up during the public hearing that would affect how we would vote, okay? And then Bob said, well, he now had information from the applicant on what had been done on that. There is some dispute as whether or not it constitutes activity on the conditional use permit. It is my opinion that we should notice that for a public hearing, let people make their comments and it would, the public hearing would be on whether or not that permit's valid and First District has a type of notice that it is and I can't recall what that is and let people have their input and let planning and zoning make a decision because it's already come up on the agenda, there's been all this activity underneath. I think at this point in time that if our zoning official just makes a decision and says, we're not going to have any public input on it, that we're going to have an issue with transparency. And I don't think that's the right way to proceed in this instance. Might have been the right way to do it three months ago, but it's not the right way to do it anymore. I think we should have a public hearing and let the planning and zoning board make a decision.
Ms. Bartley?
So what you're suggesting then is that the public hearing be conducted by the planning and zoning board?
Exactly.
They would have to notice it and come forward. And the result of that public hearing is what? Either we're going to enforce?
Is whether or not the planning and zoning board's opinion that work was commenced on this two thousand and five conditional use permit, which would expire in two thousand and eight if activity had not taken place or whatever that word's going to be. And it is, it is an issue where, I don't know if Bob agrees with me, where reasonable minds maybe may agree or disagree whether work commenced or not. But I think that's a decision that the planning and zoning board should make.
I guess I'm wondering if the qualification is there to make that decision on the planning and zoning board, whether or not they've commenced or fulfilled the conditional use or not. I see it kind of getting a little bit more convoluted. Our law basically states that Bob makes the decision or should make the decision based on his experience and now we're saying, well, it should be a whole bunch of people's experience first, which then leads to kind of a free for all. I don't know, it's a tough one in that particular case. I guess I would rather try and follow the statutes and go ahead and make a decision and then you end up in a court situation, I suppose, or some other situation and it comes back to the planning and zoning board and maybe following our ordinance rather than creating some new pathways appropriate. I don't know that. I don't know what First District advised you to do.
They advised us to notice it for a hearing and let the planning and zoning board make a decision. That's what they told me. I don't know if Bob, when you talked to them, if they had a different input, but that was what was recommended.
So they have a precedent from some other?
Definitely. And it's not a statute, it's based on our ordinance. Our process in the past has been that we would put it on the agenda as a discussion item as opposed to a public hearing. So that we're not going outside of our process except for we would let the public also participate in the conversation. Whereas in the past, when discussion items would put on the calendar, that would be just for the planning and zoning board to discuss and to give an advisory opinion to the zoning officer.
I guess I've not seen any of the planning commissions make advisory opinions, so that somewhat concerns me.
I guess, what, is there any definition, Bob, explained on the mining process that has to begin?
Well, the process is under the zoning ordinance talks about the administrative decisions, which is under my office. If I make a decision such as, let's say we give a building permit and someone feels that the setbacks are not being met, then they appeal to the zoning board. That's their avenue to appeal the decision.
I mean, what?
On the mining, on the mining itself, I mean, we can get into that if you want, but it wasn't noticed, so we don't want to get into that trouble again. But, you know, basically we issued a conditional use permit in two thousand and six, it looks like, and work had to, well, whatever date we start issued the permit, I don't have the permit in front of me. We issued a conditional use permit. It was on two different areas. One was on north side of the road, one was on the south side. The north side of the road, there's no issue on that one whatsoever. On the south side of the road, from driving by, you would look at it and a typical civilian may be able to deduce that there's nothing been going on there.
Was it a separate permit or just one for both pieces of property?
Same permit for both quarters.
For both pieces of property?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, there might have been confusion there. Bob, first you said two separate permits were issued. Are you saying there are two separate permits or there's one?
One permit for two properties.
One permit covering two properties.
So does the work on the north qualify them for having, doing improvements?
Well, plus they've done additional work on the south side. It's just they haven't, they haven't brought the humongous excavators in and started digging the big holes to the south side yet. They've done preliminary test holes and there's a name for it, the test borings or some word they used is what caused me to deduce. By them going in and doing the actual borings on the south side, to me, that gives me enough information that they've started the mining process, that they know it's there and they're ready to rock and roll. The state issued a permit on both north and south and it looks like September first, two thousand and six, after we issued, after we issued the permit, then the state came and gave them a mining permit afterwards.
So?
If you add it all together, to me, that's how I deduced that it would be enough to...
If you make that decision and somebody wants to appeal that, what's the process?
Then they would go to the, they'd come to my office and say, I want to appeal this decision and then it would go to the planning and zoning board, or board of adjustment in this case.
Have they done that yet?
No.
Because he hasn't made a decision. They can't appeal until a decision would be made.
So Bob hasn't made a decision yet?
I thought he did.
No. I guess I was under the impression that he had...
I was under the impression Bob gave him the go ahead to start.
That's not my understanding. Where are we at in the process, Bob?
Well, we're in the process, last Tuesday at the zoning meeting, I was going to tell the zoning board that, what my decision was, but that got thrown out, so.
So you did make a decision?
I did make, in my, in my mind, I made the decision. It's just what Judge Pierce is referring to, it needs to be made out in public so that people that don't think it's the right decision can appeal, so.
But they still can appeal. That is not what my position is and yes, they can appeal. What my position is, is that once you notice it for something, then to go back to another process is difficult. Have you said anything to the holder of the conditional use permit, Bob, what your decision is? Because I know you sent letters out saying that it wasn't valid. Did you tell them after the letters went out that it wasn't valid, that it is now valid?
I told them it was under review in a meeting.
So a decision has not formally been made to answer that question?
Were they instructed to cease activity then?
But I hadn't, as far as I know, they hadn't started activity there.
Well, they're in the process of installing their culvert under the road for the conveyor. That's what I was asking, why the description of what mining activity, is there a list of certain activities that need to take place?
So we haven't noticed this discussion either?
No.
Alright, so I think we're getting ahead of ourselves here at some point. I think what we would need to do is go ahead and decide whether we're going to notice this for our next meeting and advise Bob, or we're going to just automatically turn it back over to the planning commission, which I don't think is probably the proper way, but somebody can tell me differently. But at this point, the discussion needs to be, are we going to hold the notice and we're going to hear it and advise Bob? Or are we going to turn it back to the planning commission? Does that sound correct? And they have to notice it also.
I'm not a legal person, I just do what I'm told.
I didn't stay at a Holiday Express either, but yeah, at the same time, it seems logically if we're requiring notice or we feel we should require some sort of notice, that we either do it with our board, taking the testimony in the public hearing and advising you, or we send it right back to planning and zoning and they notice it and they make a decision whether they're going to advise you or not. But I guess...
I don't know, Terry, what puts more power into an advisory decision, ours or the planning and zoning?
If you're trying to advise Bob, I would say you put it on this agenda to make that decision.
That's on my thought.
So if that's what he's asking for is your discretion of what you want him to do, then it should be here. Otherwise, if it's going to be a discussion for planning and zoning on whether he issues it or not, I think we need to know whether we're going to let the planning and zoning person make that decision or whether we're going to have it go straight to the planning and zoning. So I think it should be here.
Okay, thank you.
So what's our process right now? Our process right now is our?
He makes the decision.
Makes the decision.
And then it would be appealed to the planning and zoning board or board of adjustment as far as our ordinance is now. So...
So why can't we do that or why shouldn't we do that?
Because we had this issue at the planning and zoning meeting, apparently where it was basically an advisory opinion and that isn't correct according to First District. So what he's saying is if he makes that decision, he makes that decision. It shouldn't go in front of the planning and zoning as a discussion item. That's where we're getting mixed up, I think, so.
So why was it on the agenda?
Bob wanted planning and zoning to make a decision, give him direction to go. Did I say that right, Bob? Give you direction?
Advice, yes, yes. In the past, for the last fifteen years, we've been, and apparently we're not doing it right, but we've always taken information to the zoning board just to ask them, you know, how does this look and is it fit in the area? A long time ago, we had an area, a thing in our zoning ordinance, which we considered a catch-all conditional use permit. If it wasn't in the ordinance, but we thought that it felt good, then we would allow it in. But since then, those days are gone, but we still take, we still talk to the county, the planning commission and just ask their advice on certain things. I guess we'll stop doing that from now on. We'll make the hard calls and if they come back to an appeal, they'll come back to an appeal.
Do you have dates in which the borings were done and I think trees were removed? Do you know when those happened so that you could make an informed decision?
Well, I know timeframe, I got it by times of the year, such as fall two thousand and six, construction of the box culvert on the thirty-fourth avenue, spring two thousand and seven, mining begins on the north eighty, summer two thousand and eight, removal of existing trees on the north and south side of two fourteenth, mineral exploration at the abandoned farmstead on the south one sixty. And that's what I based my decision on, was that.
So that was in two thousand and eight?
And that fell within the three month, um, three year time, timeframe of the conditional use permit.
But the only thing we will be deciding is if Bob would take this to the zoning board.
Yes.
We're not deciding on the permit.
Right, but I'm just, I'm trying to come about how he made his decision.
I guess in my opinion, we could put it on agenda for next commission to decide if Bob should move forward with the zoning board?
I mean, he's our compliance officer, he's, makes a decision, if they don't like it, they appeal and it goes to the zoning. It's not us deciding, you know?
I think Bob's looking, Bob's looking for direction, if he should make the decision or not initially.
I think he should. That's part of our compliance, he's got the data, make that decision and...
Do we, well, I don't know, this is difficult. I hate to set a precedence here. Was it noticed how you notice everything or was there a misstep in the notice?
Notice, well, obviously the notice for the last zoning meeting wasn't done properly because I, all I listed was the conditional use permit. We didn't issue who the conditional use permit was for or who it was issued to.
And you typically do? You would put the real estate description?
On a, on a, on a item where the zoning board is making a decision, action discussion item, yes, and we'd list every, the whole nine yards.
But if it's just an advisory opinion, then you don't?
In the past, we've done it both ways. Typically, just the conditional use permit that we're going to be discussing.
There were four discussion items on the agenda and the other three, you could read the notice and know what they were for. It said who and what, or the legal and what the issue was. This just said the conditional use number and nothing else. I think we better, I think we need to chew on this a little while. I think we better put it on our next agenda.
I guess a question to Bob, if you were to start over on this process, what would you do?
Well, I wouldn't put it on the agenda. What I would do is I'd put it under my department head report, still talk to the county, still let the zoning board know what my decision was. It just wouldn't be on the agenda. It would be, just like I got, I got a department head report right here in front of me. Sometimes I put them in your packet, sometimes I don't. If I don't put them in your packet, you still, you don't know what, I give the recording person a copy of my notes.
So at this point, you have not given us your decision in any reports at this point?
Not at this point.
I guess I'd go back and start over, provide us with that decision and then we'll go from there.
Very good.
Let's do it the right way. And if it requires our decision at that point or our advisory or we've got issues with it, then we'll talk about it. But I don't want to get in the middle of the process. Let's follow the process properly. Let's start over with your notice to us and we'll go from there.
And do you want this on every conditional use permit from now on, would be the question?
Just, just follow the rules. And if you've done it before, you continue to do it to notice us.
No good. That's all I have, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Missy?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll start on, I don't have very much today to report to you. The data logger meeting on December sixth at nine o'clock in the morning is put on hold. We're having scheduling conflicts of getting Jason Hodges to come to South Dakota and talk to us. I suggested maybe we do a conference call and have everybody in one, the same room. We're working on that, I just found all this out yesterday. So if you were planning on going, please wait until I let you know further. I attended the Safety, Loss and Control Conference on the eighth and ninth grade information. I'm very glad I went. I'm very glad I went. I found out a few things that I could utilize, so... And my last thing, our gophers. What a wonderful program there this year. We've, I didn't get the total amount of gophers, but we've already paid out half of what I budgeted for gophers for this year, so, and that was only through six total townships. So, I mean, I have the money in the budget, there's no issue there, but I just thought I would let you know the gopher program's doing well. Any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. It's 9 o'clock, we do have a public hearing. 9:00 AM, public hearing on the proposal to issue revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed 10 million pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law, Chapter 9.54, as amended in order to finance projects on behalf of South Dakota State University Foundation, a South Dakota nonprofit corporation which supports the educational mission of the South Dakota State University in Brookings, South Dakota. I'd like to open the public meeting. Is there anybody that, opponents to this project would like to come forward and speak? Is there any opponents that would like to come forward and speak? Hearing none, move on to proponents? Is there any proponents that would like to come forward and speak? Any proponents? Okay, hearing none. Like to close the public hearing. Look for action authorized.
Second.
I get a motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, recall the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, back to...
Time to clear the room, I guess. For the chairman.
Tim Dwyer for SDSU Foundation. I really just wanted to thank the commission and the staff, you guys have been incredible to work with. This is going to be a really neat facility for the Brookings, both the Performing Arts Center and the practice gyms. And so, look forward to being able to finance the pledges, thanks to your help. And hope we have the opportunity to come back and do this again with future building projects, so thank you very much.
Back to department head reports, Vicki?
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. You should have received in your packet the Finance Officer's Report for October. And we will have some be it noted items with that. The auditors account with the treasurer, the payroll and additives total, the highway expenditure report, and the register of deed statement of fees. And also in the report, there shows that we have surplus cash of 46.68%, which is basically on target with what has been prior years in October with the tax collection and everything. So we're on target there. I've been working with a few department heads on the budget for the end of the year and we are sitting better than we have been last year for the contingency. There's not near as many contingency items that we're looking at right now. We still have to go through and see what bills are yet to be paid by the end of December. So we will have some contingency transfers in December, but it's not to the amount that we're going to be spending, the whole 500 and some thousand that we have. So that's good news. And I went to the First Bank and Trust yesterday and opened an account that the BCOAC will use to put the credit cards. When they come, ACH will come to that checking account. We still haven't got the checks, so Sean can get a voided check so he can set up the credit cards, but that's in the process, so that will be done hopefully today. But that process is done, so we're moving forward on that. And we also, I've been in contact with Don Tough that is going to be meeting us at 1 o'clock today telephonically instead of in person on the sales tax for BCOAC. So we've been working on that as an office also. And also, we need an action to approve the quarterly transfers. And this will be the fourth quarter transfers from general fund to highway and bridge fund for 750,000. And also from general fund to emergency management fund of 15,531.25. So those, we will have to have action on. So is there any other questions that you have of our office?
Nope.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Do you, do you have any idea how long it will take to get those checks so that we can get going?
I'm hoping today. It will just be the checks that they have, the free checks at First Bank and Trust. So hopefully today, so then Sean can move forward with getting that done.
Okay.
So...
Quick question on the 750, it's from the general fund to the highway and bridge fund. What, and that's for?
That is, when, at the beginning of the year, we were going to transfer $3 million from general fund to the highway and bridge fund. So we do it in quarterly transfers and this is the last quarter transfer that we have. So this is just routine.
This is budget stuff that we were going in?
Yes, yes, and the same way with emergency management.
It's nothing to do with our fund balance for the 201 or any of that type of stuff, right?
No, nothing.
Yep.
This is just the fourth quarter transfer that we set up at the beginning of the year in our budget.
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I will make a motion to approve the quarterly transfers.
Second.
For the fourth quarter.
Get a motion, a second for A and B?
Yep.
For A and B? Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Marty?
Good morning. Well, the actual reason I wanted some more time this morning is I had a wonderful PowerPoint presentation of my vacation in Arizona. However, the state's attorney's office has recommended that I not move forward with that, so I'm gonna... I'm just going to go on to business then. Yesterday, I got the easement signed for our bridge project on 238 that we will be turning in for our big grant application. And that was a good thing to get finished. You won't see that probably till the next meeting. I'll put it on the agenda for then, and basically that's, we do it in every project. The board signs those and then we mail them to the state. So that'll be part of our application process. There's also a certificate of utilities. There's no utilities that will be affected by that project either, so that's good news and should make things travel forward real well. We still want to keep our fingers crossed, but we're moving in the right direction. I also, for the December 19th meeting coming up, I've invited Doug Wessel with Banner Engineering to come and give not only a status update, but also information that they are compiling that will go in with the grant applications by the end of the year. And it would be a very good time for the board to ask specific questions, if you have any, as to what has been done or why we do what we do. But that's, that's coming up, I just thought I'd give you a little time to think about it. Then on Thursday, November 16th, LTAP, South Dakota LTAP, which is the Local Transportation Assistance Program, officials invited the Brookings County Highway Department to lunch at Pizza Ranch. And the reason for that was at the Region 8 Road Conference in Rapid City, the highway department was awarded the Hushomi Award Winner for the State Competition. And we also were awarded winner of the eight-state region winner. Our project was a shoulder-rolling apparatus that we dreamt up and followed through to, through construction and we also use it. So it was really a good award to win. And it also made the guys feel pretty good that their effort was well-accepted and in, by their peers and, and I'm very proud of them, they did a super job with that. Almost all the culvert work is done and completed for 2017. A couple of ones that we have left are basically just weather-related or water-related. So that's temporarily on hold till spring probably. Preparations for snow removal is complete. Later on in the agenda, there's a resolution to purchase a truck chassis off of our 2017 bid. To elaborate a little bit on that, if you remember, we passed a resolution back in August or July to purchase our 2017 truck. And we probably won't see that chassis until February. This chassis for 2018, I've just kind of thrown up my arms and decided, you know, play by their rules and get the ball rolling. And hopefully we'll see this 2018 truck in probably June. Same thing with, at the next meeting, because I didn't get an answer from our vendor as of, until yesterday. But the box, plow, and wing and sander, they've agreed to allow us to purchase off this year's bid on that too. So we'll be touching base and doing that formally on the 5th of December. Probably the only thing that a person could attempt to try, that would be a little bit different than what I currently do, is put restrictions in the bid processor documents that limit or state when we want delivery of a chassis. There's good and bad with each. In almost any case, I would have to think that the price would vary considerably and probably the number of bidders might also be affected because of the limitations if they just can't get it by a certain time. The other thing that would be different, like buying off your existing bid, not only do you have history with that specifications that you put together, but you also have the ability, you know, there's no guarantee that they will allow you to purchase off of that in the following years. So to make a long story short, that's my attempt in this, is to still use the same process that we're currently battling with and just speed up the process, get the process started earlier. This will not affect our budget, will not affect any thing we do that we haven't done in the past. It's just hopefully going to allow us to get our equipment in the year that we need that equipment by our replacement schedule and also get away from this, you know, you turned it in 2017, don't get it till the second month. Like our, for example, our truck chassis is not due to come offline till probably February of 2018. Well, usually, you know, three months, four months at the most is more than adequate that you would expect to receive delivery, but this year, it doesn't happen. So instead of kind of confusing and also I create work for Vicki because she's going to carry over money from this year so that we can pay for it next year, hopefully we'll, we'll get it straightened around to where we're getting our equipment, paying for it in the year. Budget process will be much more understandable because it'll be four things that we're getting in. So that's my thought on that. And then also, we don't seem to have problems necessarily with other equipment, so I was just planning on leaving that until the year it's determined or put in the budget for and we'll just go about. But it, it seems even kind of ironic to me that some of these places can't produce their equipment in a more timely manner. But anyway, that's, that's all I have unless you have some questions for me.
Mr. Bartley?
Thank you. Your Project the Shoulder-Rolling Award, that was an eight-state award that you got?
Yes, yep.
Was that a certificate award?
We got a little, kind of a clear plaque or...
I guess my point is if you receive something like that on behalf of your staff, I would like it to be presented to your staff and you as a recognition at one of our meetings, like next meeting on December 5th.
Okay.
So that they know that we appreciate, in addition to the award. You know, I think any award in any of our departments, we should be able to thank you and give those awards publicly up here. There's no objection with that.
Alright. Hopefully I can get more than me and my shadow to come up, but I'll try, I'll get them.
Tell them we appreciate it and they should show up.
Alright.
We don't care what they're wearing, just show up.
Alright.
Yeah, good job.
Thanks.
You do us, you do us proud, yeah.
Did a nice job. And we've also had a couple counties come by to look at it and get some measurements, so pretty nice. Well, that's what one, one vendor suggested that we could talk to him, but we haven't did that. But it's pretty unique.
Mr. Chair?
Any more?
As relates to the small structures, that report, did that come in? I think it was due in November, have we, I don't remember seeing it, did it?
No, I haven't, I'll have to bring that or just send it out to you. I, that came, yes, we went through that and I'll have to make some copies and get it. But you're right, yeah, that was due November 1st.
And maybe that could just go into Dropbox, but I don't know how big it is, the report, but it'd be nice to see that.
Right, yep.
And did you, after you read, have you had a chance to review it yet or?
Yeah, we went through it, Banner went through that, well, shortly before I left on vacation. So it was just kind of a brief overlay and then that's also where the two that we're doing next year included that they were on the top of the priority list. So basically, they never found, fortunately, they never found any that were showing further deterioration as far as like adding more structures to the review list or inspection list. The ones that they did were stabilized, so I think, well, there's some options or opinions in there that, that they offer that we can take a look at too, but we'll do that. Maybe, maybe I'll get them out this week and then we could do it for like the December 5th meeting. It might even be better if you would prefer to wait until December 19th or whatever that second meeting is in December, when Doug is here and I'm sure he's going to bring Colin, they would have, they'll go through all of that if you'd like that too, if that would work. I can get the report out first, how's that, and then I'll wait till then to...
I'd just like to know what... I'd just like to know what, what the, and when you send out, and then when we have our discussion, just how we're sitting and, and what the recommendations are, so.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions?
Dick, I was just wondering, now, getting into the snow and ice season, I was wondering if at the next meeting we could go over the sanding and snow removal policy that the county has.
Oh, okay.
Not only for the public's information, but also for the commissions.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you. Hopefully don't come. Nine twenty. Finance, we did that. I didn't even see him come in.
I was, I was late. My assistant had something she had to do the first thing this morning, so I was a little late getting up here. I don't really have anything for you, other than we are currently, on the welfare side, we are looking at changing some of the statutes and reviewing those. Once the welfare directors get done kinda looking at what they're looking at, we'll forward it on to the state's attorneys. And a couple of the state's attorneys are currently working with our association on those. And otherwise, we've still around a hundred and ten phone calls coming in every two weeks. About ninety-six we made out. The veterans' traffic is still staying up with three, thirty-two coming in, and the welfare traffic has backed off a little bit to about twenty. And I'm still going up on campus and meeting with them.
Is there anything legislatively that you're hearing that could come up in this session or anything like that, that can affect any of that stuff, also federally, you guys keep, is there anything that us as a commission would need to, you know, talk to or take, I mean, I don't wanna testify or anything like that, but I think legislatively for even all of our departments, if there's stuff that's coming up that can affect our county and what we provide, the services we provide, you know, have you heard anything or seen anything?
No, actually, that's what this, the, the group that, we'll be doing a conference call today at three o'clock, and then the next, first week in December, we're gonna sit down, and basically, we have these regional trainings. There's one in Sioux Falls, Pierre, and, and Rapid. Anyway, we sit down and we're gonna go step-by-step through the statute. We don't wanna change a lot of it because the hospitals kinda get involved in stuff, but we wanna look about cleaning up the language. Once we've got an idea what we're gonna do on that, then we'll bring it forward to the, like you say, the state's attorneys and also to the commission.
Just keep us informed on stuff.
I'll do.
Ms. Pierce?
We were at a meeting, I think it was yesterday, where I understand they're looking at the possibility of putting a, a veteran cemetery in Sioux Falls. Are, are you following that at all, or?
The, the veteran cemetery has been a, an issue for a number of years on the east side of the state. I, I kinda know a lot of the background on it simply because ten years ago when I was at the state, that was something that, that we were looking at and stuff. And so, I'm kind of not real involved with it, cause I, I see both sides of it. The state is hesitant because I figure it costs almost half million dollars to maintain a cemetery. And so they don't wanna take on that kind of a burden, even though the VA will pay to have the, the ground set up and everything. There's, there's a requirement of so many acres, I, I believe it's around eighty acres. Anyway, so between those two things, I haven't really been actively saying yea or nay to it as far as myself. I mean, if you guys would like me to take a firmer stance on it, I would be willing to do whatever you would like. Just, I just know that we're getting a lot of pushback from the state because of cost.
I, I guess I don't need you to take a stance, but I would like you to stay abreast of what's going on and report back to us, because I asked you a couple months ago, you know, if you had heard anything from Watertown that, that those guys were working on this. So if you would just
Okay.
Keep up on what's going on and keep us abreast, that would be appreciated.
And, and the biggest, the veterans' I gotta make sure I get them right. There's Veterans Council and Veterans Commission. The Veterans Council is the one that is, that is made up of, of, I think it's seven different veterans organizations, like the DAV, American Legion, VFW. They're the ones that have been kinda pushing and main pushed towards it. I had been going to their meetings, I haven't been recently, but I can surely attend their meetings. They're usually in Sioux Falls, so it's not a, you know, a major trip. And, and they're the ones that are really pushing that legislation.
Thank you. Move on to regular business. Action approved resolution number seventeen dash four-nine, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one new two thousand eighteen truck chassis.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion of second. We've, I guess Dick's already provided us with the discussions. Call and roll, please.
Pierce?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, action approved resolution number seventeen dash five-zero, a plat of lots seven A and eight A, Reeves subdivision of government lot four, section five, township one twelve north, range fifty-two west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Look for motion.
Second.
You have a motion of second. Background here.
We, this was heard at the November planning and zoning meeting, approved by them and sent to this board with the recommendation of approval.
Call and roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, at approval of resolution number seventeen dash five-one, a plat of South Dakota soybeans processors tracked three A and three B in the northwest quarter of section twenty-four, township one ten north, range fifty-one west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
You have a motion of a second.
Once again, this was heard at the November planning and zoning meeting, approved and sent to this board with the recommendation of approval.
Call and roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Letter D, first reading of ordinance number two zero one seven dash zero two, an ordinance providing for the amendment of ordinance two zero one five dash zero three. Brookings County ordinance number two zero one seven dash two, an ordinance providing for the amendment of ordinance two zero one five dash zero three, whereas Brookings County previously adopted ordinance two zero one five dash zero three, which re-adopted the nineteen ninety-seven revised zoning ordinance in accordance with chapters eleven-two, whereas the Brookings County, South Dakota Board of County Commissioners deems it necessary for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the county to amend ordinance two zero one five dash zero three by repealing the following articles. Article five, county zoning commission appeals variance in conditional uses. Article six, duties of the county zoning officers, officer, board of county commissioners, and courts on matters of appeal. Article seven, enforcement. Article eight, schedule of fees, charges, and expenses. Article ten, amendments and replacing said articles with article six, a copy of which is attached here to administrative chapter six zero one. General chapter six zero two, zoning official, chapters six zero three, planning zoning commission, chapter six zero four, board of adjustment, chapter six zero five, procedures for conditional uses, variances, and zoning amendments. And chapter six zero six, repeal of conflicting ordinances. Therefore, be it ordained by Brookings County, South Dakota, the ordinance two zero one five dash zero three is hereby amended by repealing the following articles. Article five, county zoning commission, appeals variance in conditional uses. Article six, duties of county zoning officer, board of county commissioners, and courts on matters of appeal. Article seven, enforcement. Article eight, schedule of fees, charges, and expenses. Article ten, amendments and replacing said articles with article six. A copy which is attached here to administrative chapter six zero one. General chapter six zero two, zoning official, chapter six zero three, planning and zoning commission, chapter six zero four, board of adjustment, chapter six zero five, procedures for conditional uses, variances, and zoning amendments. And chapter six zero six, repeal of conflicting ordinances. Adopted this nineteenth day, December two thousand seventeen. Apologize to the, the commissioners for redoing this. Our procedure last time, we noted, we had questions and we made a significant change, so it needed to be published and brought before the public again, so that's why it's, it's the same action. The next, the second reading and public hearing will be held second reading and public hearing will be held at nine AM on Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. It's nine thirty. We have District Seven State Representative Spence Holly, discussion on drainage issues and concerns. Spence, we come forward, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
Commissioners, I guess, I just, we've been having discussions over the last several years, and I thought it'd be good if we got together and visited a little bit about the drainage. As you know, it's been, what, six years now since you've guys got out of the drainage business and repealed your ordinances on it, which several other counties had done at the same time. And from that, it developed, we had a three-year drainage task force at the legislative level. And we met for three years all around the state, took a lot of testimony, and, and everybody kinda ended up in agreement that we wanted to do drainage management by a watershed basin. And Jay Gilbertson's here with the East Dakota Water Development District. He's really the specialist in it, and he's the backup as soon as I goof up here, but we set up, basically, we were looking at about seven different drainage basins, Sioux River being one that we're in, James River Valley, the Red River Valley way up in the northeast tip up there, the Minnesota River, and around. So we came back to legislature and we got those areas set that those in statute, that that would be our, our river basins is what it is. And then the next step was they appointed a new task force to go to develop the management of those. And then that's where the problems hit. One of the big issues when we were doing this was trying to develop funding mechanism. Actually, they got, they gotta have the ability to tax people to be able to hire people to manage it and all that, and that's where a lot of trouble ran in. They tried a couple different bills the last couple sessions, this new task force did on setting up a management, how it would be excluded the class one cities, and left everybody else in it, and everything got killed. And I, and I've come to the realization that it's bridged too far, and we're the only state in our entire region that doesn't manage by a, the, the, the flow of water. We've cut it at the county level, and the big discussion is, we all know, water doesn't stop at the county line, and everybody agreed on that, but it wasn't able to go further. So I think the next step is need to figure out how to get the counties back into the management of water until we can take this other step. And from that being said, the, the questions go back to our original task force. What was keeping the counties out of the management of water? And one of the biggest issues that came up was resources. Specifically, a hydrologist. That when you get into an issue on management of water and the flow of water, that the counties, commissions, most of them felt that they didn't have the ability to do that and to make rulings on it. Or they didn't have the expertise on staff to fully do that too. So I guess what I'm coming forward today is just to kind of find out from the, from your side, what you need to get back in the business and what we need to do. You know, a couple of the low-hanging fruits are, one of the things is that you had a, before by statute, we've got a hundred dollar cap on which you can charge for a fee when somebody applies for a drainage permit. And some counties say, well, we've got more work in it than that. So we had drafted a bill back in fifteen, I believe it was, to increase the cap to five hundred dollars, that you could charge up to five hundred dollars for a fee if somebody's applied for a drainage permit. The other thing we did with that twenty fifteen legislation that created the problems is that we set out in it a standard of what we thought the counties needed for information in order to make the, for the permitting process. And, and from the ag community side, that turned into a big fight. They didn't wanna see these standards put in and all that, so that got killed. So my question to you is, is what do you think it would take to get you back in the business of managing water? What do you need from the state side? What do you need in statutes to do that? And, and I, and I mentioned to Bob, I need to get together with him and, and visit a little bit more on this, but I thought I would just tee this up by presenting it to you. If, and Jay Gilbertson, one of the discussions I've been having, and I think it's fine to go talk about hydrologists, isn't it? And is that the East Dakota Water Development District feels that they would be able to house a hydrologist, for example. And that hydrologist then would be made available to several counties. Now, to do that, the counties that are gonna need it would probably have to kick in some funding on it to help hire for a regional basis a hydrologist and kinda use it as a model for other development districts if, to use on it. They all, they have the ability to tax already, and they're way below their, their levy, their mill limit that they could use, so they've got the ability to tax it. Their, their only problem is that they have the three percent cap that you all have got on, on budget. And we would have to, if they wanted to change that, we would have to go do that at the state level. Whereas if he's been working with a coalition of counties, then the counties would all participate a little bit, and, and I'm speaking out of turn here with Jay sitting behind me, but there's an option to work something there, I guess, to work it on, on a basis. And I guess I just wanted to tee the discussion up and see what it's gonna take to get you back in the business again.
Well, I'm-
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I am probably the, I know I'm the only commissioner that is sitting now, that was here when we had drainage board meetings. It was very difficult to make informed decisions because none of us were hydrologists. I was not in favor of disbanding our drainage board or ordinance, and I, I think it's important that we at least do something, and if it has to be on the local level, then so be it. But I believe that a hydrologist would help us a great deal. And, and the fact that, that that Jay's office could house him is, is great, and I, I don't know, have you talked to the other regional counties, or is anybody else interested?
Is it okay if I have Jay come up?
Yes, please.
Do you mind coming up, Jay? Jay's been doing much more of the legwork with other counties. So I, I think it's probably better that, instead of me speaking for him.
You were doing okay.
Yeah, I was, I was on the thin edge.
Jay Gilbertson with the East Dakota Water Development District, as Representative Holly said, that kinda walked through the, the history of their recent efforts at the legislative level. Prior to the Executive Board's decision to suspend the latest iteration of a the latest iteration of a legislative drainage, uh, summer study group, I had initiated some discussions, um, visited with commissioners in Millbank, Grant County, and Dool County, uh, actually Moody as well. In an effort to try and identify a potential project, which was one of the things that group had been tasked with working on. Uh, I brought the attention of the Speaker of the House and several others that the latest task force wasn't doing very much. And so to take care of that, I got appointed to it, uh, the last time around. Unfortunately, they never met, so I didn't have a nameplate, but that's all right. Um, but raised the prospect of, as Representative Holly said, of, um, perhaps some kind of a joint effort. Even the busiest county in South Dakota right now probably doesn't have enough work to keep a full, somebody busy full-time working on drainage issues. But collectively, perhaps, you know, three or four counties, uh, might have enough work or need a, a level of support that would make it worth their while to invest, you know, some percentage shared by the Water Development District. Um, so that if they have a question, they can get an answer. If they've got a particular concern, it can be looked at by somebody who's working for them rather than having to depend on the, uh, expertise, uh, provided by the applicant. And, and meaning no disparagement, but, you know, their engineers, the, the vested interest of their engineer is to tell you whatever their client wants you to hear. Uh, and that's not always, well, that needs to be understood and recognized. And so it's, it would be best if the other side had a, a resource to work off of. And so, uh, yeah, there, there was some interest in that, uh, Cottington, not Cottington, uh, Grant County, Dool County. In our area, Moody and Lake are the four counties that are still in the business, uh, of issuing drainage permits. With all respect to Commissioner Miller, I think the, the commission made the right decision seven or eight years ago to get out because what you're saying, what the permits were saying was the case, clearly wasn't the case. And it was only going to be a matter of time. Uh, again, some of our counties have continued to work on that. And with that, maybe we can come up with a way to do something. And I think, uh, if, if the interest would be there, we could move forward with, uh, developing some kind of proposal where again, it would be maybe a, one option, a, a joint funded activity. The district puts in a certain amount of money, Cottington, Grant, Brookings, Dool, I don't know. Some number of counties all throw money into the kitty and we work out some kind of arrangement whereby that person would be available to, to address issues and questions. Now, certainly, Representative Holly mentioned the, um, one of the examples, one of the problems I see in the current code that you are operating under is that cap on the, on the permit fee. You know, whether it's a, a two acre project or a three section project. And the law says you can, you can ask for a one-time, no more than one hundred dollar, uh, permit, even though the language talks about, well, whatever is needed to get the job done. Well, you know, you can't do anything for a hundred bucks, I'm sorry. And if you can afford to tile three sections of land and you're going to complain about a five hundred or a thousand dollar permit fee, I'm going to pay no attention to your complaints. So anyway, that's one of the things that we've kicked around. The interest was certainly there, um, initially in the context of maybe a special project for the old task force. But now that that's gone the way that, well, will go the way of the dodo bird, uh, in a few months, uh, it's time to start looking at other activities.
Jay, what's your district encompass? You have East Dakota Water District.
Cottington, Grant, Hamlin, Dool, Kingsbury, Brookings, Lake, Moody, Minnehaha, Eastern Minor, and thankfully, that part of Lincoln County that is in the city of Sioux Falls. So we've got the Big Sioux, basically, it's the Big Sioux River Basin, um, down to Brandon. And then parts of the Minnesota to the north and a little bit of the, the western watersheds, the Vermillion and the far stretch of the James.
Are you thinking this hydrologist would serve all of those counties? Or I just heard you mention Grant, Dool, Moody, Brookings when you were talking about hydrologists.
Well, the initial activity, um, the, the, the original concept was, was kicking it around in, in light of the counties of our, my counties, if you want to call it that, counties within the Water Development District that are still in the drainage business. Now, Brookings isn't one of those right now. But Grant, Dool, Moody, Lake. We've got a body that can help them with their current situation. That was sort of the thinking. Now, Representative Holly would like to see his home county, my home county, back involved in the business. And if, if one of the answers to the question, what might it take, is something like that, then we'd have to look at something else. I don't know if I'd want to start out by saying, well, let's, let's do it for everybody. I'm not sure how it's going to work. It's, I like, I'm a big fan of doing small pilot activities and see what happens. And with Cotting, with, with Grant and Dool still in the business, both in the same area, that was sort of a starting point.
We have looked at the Moody County drainage ordinance. I think we might have looked at Grant, but I can't remember for sure. Those counties that you said that are still in the business, okay, that you're working with, how is that going? Are their ordinances working well? Are there problems? What, what are you observing?
They continue to issue permits. I don't, personal opinion, they are no better than the permits that you issued. They're, they're no closer to complying with the requirements. And, uh, hold it up because I can never remember exactly. But what the law says is amongst other things, the permit basically certifies that, that the drainage creates no unreasonable hardship or injury to the owner of the land receiving the drainage. It's not clear to me how that's being determined, other than if I ask you, do you think it's okay? And you go, well, yeah, I guess, that, that's how they determine it. I don't know that eventually that's going to hold up. Drainage is natural encouragement means a natural water course. The owner of a land being drained does not substantially alter on a permanent basis the course of flow, the amount of flow, or the time of flow from that which would otherwise occur. Nobody's figuring that out. They're just doing it, and if nobody complains, it works. And I think in the, um, in the belief that, and I, I'm not going to argue entirely with that, that if, if we can bring neighbors together to talk about a project ahead of time, maybe we can avoid some of the conflict. But at the end of the day, uh, Grant County issues a permit and some downstream landowner of that permit holder takes legal action against the holder of the permit, and prevails, they're, the county's open for liability. Because it's pretty clear that they aren't doing, they haven't done the things that are called for in the law. And so there is no protection while we were, it's a good faith effort. Well, no, you, how did you determine what the flow was? Well, we didn't. That's not doing it. And that's, I'm not an attorney, but their state's attorney and other states' attorneys have all said the same thing. As yours did back in the day, get out until it's fixed, until the code is fixed. If we can't fix the code, then stay out.
So you said there's four there and you're working with those four? They pay dues to the?
In, in, in light of the, I, I haven't done much since last spring. You know, the, in, in March, whenever it was, April, when we, they repopulated the latest iteration of the task force and I got put on board. All right, well, let's get some, let's come up with an idea. One of the things the legislation called for was a pilot project of some kind in the northeast, in the Minnesota Red River Basin. Well, Dool and, good deal of Dool and most of Grant, both counties are in the Red River Bas, or in the Minnesota River Basin. So that, that fit the deal. And so my thinking was, well, there's our, there's our pilot project. Something where we could work collectively with a local resource and, and give that a try. And the interest was there. Well, a month passes and the, the E-Board, I think rightly goes, this isn't going to work. Because no matter how reasonable an idea we come up with, that we would come up with, there's still, people are going to come out of the woodwork and scream bloody murder. It's the end of the world. And so they just, rather than have a group meet for two more years and spend all kinds of money, they decided to save our tax dollars and shut it all down. I, I still think the interest would be there, uh, in taking a run at that. And if that would be of interest to Brookings County, we could maybe look at molding that all together. I think there are still some issues, again, the, the cost issue. You know, if all you guys or all Grant County can charge is fifty bucks a permit, and it's really going to cost, you know, and they do whatever, twenty permits a year, I don't know, what's the math, ten thou, five thousand dollars, something like that. I don't know that they're going to get a guy for that, even with help. And so something may need to be done with a few of these little things, just to tinker with at some point. Or as it had been in the past, the counties are going to have to basically fill in the gap between what the permit provides and what's really necessary to go forward.
Do you have an opinion on what a hydrologist would cost per year range?
No, that's the safest bet right now. Because some of it is, some of the initial work might just be inventory type activities. You know, going through and doing a, you know, follow the path of, of Madera Creek. You know, in, in an ideal world, as you go from the Minnesota County line to the Big Sioux River, the culverts or bridges through which the creek runs get progressively bigger. Okay? Show of hands, who thinks that's the case? You can't, yeah. Anyway, and we get the giggle from, anyway. Something like that might be a simple thing to do. And I mean, some of the requirements, um, to meet what would be necessary. We'd have to sit down and look a little harder at that. But I, I'm guessing a hundred thousand wouldn't be too far out of line.
And am I misunderstanding something? What your proposal is, is that one hydrologist be hired housed in your office? And you think that costs about a hundred thousand dollars a year? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, some number. And then we would, they would work for us and maybe shared between three counties or four counties. And so each county would provide, you know, maybe start out with a, just do a, I don't know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, three counties, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year. We put in forty thousand dollars, there's a hundred thousand dollars. And then as up, you know, as Brookings County has a question, they, there's somebody they can go to and provide answers to that person. And be that expert at the local level to answer some of the questions.
And I understand we've been talking drainage here. The other area where a hydrologist, in my opinion, would be of assistance to the county is on, um, conditional use permits that are involved with water issues. Would that person be available for, for that type of activity also? Would you see that as a reasonable expectation or no?
I, I don't think that would be an unreasonable request, you know, providing that expertise. No, Mr. Hill will tell you that, that the local office here is not shy about calling us already, and that's not a problem, you know, that, and we'll happily do that. But that would provide some additional support that would be available and maybe some greater opportunities for, you know, whether it's, you know, CAFO siting or any number of things that could come up.
When, when the counties issue a drainage permit, they're usually for the smaller type drainages like field tile, certain types of drainage like that. What happens when you get into a larger, larger drainage problem? Where you run into, um, having to involve the core engineers or NRCS? How is the working relationship there? Is it beneficial to have the county drainage?
Um, I, I, I'm not sure how that would, I mean, apply. I mean, the, the permitting process is envisioned in, in the code, uh, is for individual landowners or groups that have organized in, in some fashion, the old drainage district model activities. Um, certainly if we're, you know, having to deal with NRCS, their approach to drainage, um, is largely, you know, if, if what someone proposes to do fits within the constraint or con, falls within the constraints of the, you know, Swamp Buster, whatever their USDA programs are applicable, then they're interested. If it doesn't, then they have no interest. The example might be a, a tile, if I've got a field and I'm in the farm program and I want to run a tile through there. Well, they've got to determine that there are no wetlands. And they make that determination great, I can go ahead, they give me, quote, permission to put a tile in. They have not considered in any way, shape, or form what the result of that tile might do to my, to somebody who lives downstream from me. That is of no interest to them whatsoever. Their concern is, are we protecting the wetland? Wetlands protected? Go ahead, do whatever you want. So the NRCS blessing of, of saying, well, that project's okay by us, doesn't tell you anything about its impacts on downstream landowners.
Correct, that's what I'm saying. We've had some drainage issues. We have to have the corps blessing, NRCS blessing. The counties, if we establish a county drainage board, our decision's not going to trump over those.
Well, the-
We have to use their information and their, go by their rules.
With, with the NRCS, um, that is a decision between the landowner and, and them. It's not that, that NRCS trumps the county control. You, you do your thing and they do their thing. And if they want to do drainage in the county, says it's, oh, you've determined there won't be a, a problem.
Okay.
And NRCS goes, well, no, we're not going to let you do that. They're not saying you can't do it. What they're saying is, you can't do it if you want to stay in our program. You know, you're, you get benefits from this program for doing something that we think is a good thing. If you choose not to do that, that's your call. No one's, they're not going to hold it against you, but they're not going to continue to allow you to roll the program. So I mean, that's, that's not so much a control thing. The corps, yeah, if a drainage proposal, they have jurisdiction over certain waters, um, of, of the United States, including a number of those here in Brookings County. Uh, I, I, yeah, I would suspect that a Brookings County drainage board decision that overrides or would, would run counter to the federal, uh, oversight would be in trouble. But we run into those kinds of things all the time.
And that's where hydrologists would find that.
In, in a, in an ideal world, it would be really helpful if somebody were looking at it ahead of time and going, wow, hey, you don't want to do that. I used as the example, um, I would think it was probably about the last permit that was coming in before the county got out of the process. There was a landover, uh, east, a landowner east of town who wanted to do drainage and was going to run it out across some, some space. Bob and Richard brought it to me, I dug through it, and it was pretty clear. In fact, it was a textbook example of, of a matter the courts had considered thirty years ago that was like, oh, God, no. You know, if you get a permit and you do this, you're dead in the water. Knowing that, having somebody look at that ahead of time saved the whole, I mean, would have saved a lot of time and effort.
Have you had a conversation about counties grouping together and putting funds together for a hydrologist with, um, Grant, Dool, or Moody counties? Are they interested in chipping in on any of that?
I, I have, in, in the, in the context of a potential pilot project as part of the old legislative oversight group, I have talked to all three counties.
And?
Uh, Dool and Grant County were quite interested. Moody was not so much. They're very happy with what they have. They don't believe they have any trouble. And I don't know that there was that much interest there. No. If something were out there, maybe they would look at it differently.
Mr. Chairman, maybe Spencer or? Do we have a state hydrologist already on payroll for the state? If not, why not?
Well, that's a good discussion. And we, we brought the DNR in during the task force originally. And there was no resources out there. And, and we kind of tried to encourage them to, and, uh, there was no interest at all getting a hydrologist. Now, Jay has got a background there and he understands the issues going on there. But the bottom line is we don't have the resources and they haven't been willing to, to pick up the resources for that up to this point in time.
Okay, so what we're looking at is requests for these counties to band together and at least provide resources for, uh, for district hydrologists, so to speak. Uh, do other districts have hydrologists? Is this a new concept?
New concept. And, and we had this discussion during the task force when we were dra, drafting these, uh, the, uh, water basin management. And that was one of the intent, is that we'd have staff and they would have the funding available to get hydrologists and all that and, and manage it. Then they would have a board for the, for the whole basin that would make the decision on drainage. the decision on drainage to, so people downstream were considered as much as the upstream discussion. And personally, that's still the way it should have happened, but realistically, I don't see it happening again in the, in the near future here. So, this is the second-best answer that I see coming, is, is maybe you can, some kind of banding and, and using the East, East Dakota Water District as a, as the entity to, to develop a resource around, so.
As I look at it, again, having the state's project fail, so to speak, or will be failing shortly, and I'm not an expert on drainage, so to, if this is a pilot project, the, the system failed before because it, you couldn't get the counties to agree on, on where the water was going once it left county lines. If you put this particular group together with a hydrologist that works for that particular three or four, five county area, then the counties south of us where the water goes, will they have a, a seat at the table once we make decisions here that affect them there? I mean, that seemed to be the issue with the whole thing falling apart, was we couldn't all agree on who had the authority to, to manage the entire process.
Mr. Burley, will they have a seat at the table? Not direct, not, not directly as at the county level, but through the Water Development District?
They would there.
Yeah.
And they've had, and they've had to meet the requirements of the statute, so that's their seat at the table.
Right, and, and, you know, it's, it's meeting the statute and, and, and holding it to that. You know, one of the difficulties with, with what the original task force and others was, it created a whole new layer of entities, Natural Resource Districts. If you, if you look closely at the original Senate Bill Two that came out in 2015, and then you compare that to the Water Development District Code, ooh, hey, we're ninety percent there already.
Okay.
Okay, the only thing what's really missing is we don't have the drainage authority, and if the counties wanna hang on to that, that's great. We can be that third-party technical support and let the decisions be made at the local level, but we, you know, everyone can be reasonably secure in the knowledge that, you know, when Brookings County, maybe eventually, Brookings County makes a decision about a drainage project, it isn't based solely on, "Let's get the water to the Moody County line, and who cares?" Which is frankly the way the system is set up right now.
Yeah.
Get it to the border and, and chuck it. Well, and, and you may do that, but the, the staff, if you will, that's gonna be providing you with the support and information is hopefully at least gonna be going on record and saying, "No, that's a really bad idea, and here's why."
When you talk about a full-time hydrologist versus a part-time hydrologist, how easy are these people to find? Are they, are they graduates of SDSU, or where are they coming from?
That's one of the questions, I hesitate to even try and answer the question. Part of it is trying to figure out what exactly, what sorts of questions are we gonna have to answer to do it right? We've never really tried to meet the conditions of forty-six, eight, ten, eight, twenty. So, I don't know exactly what it's gonna take. A lot of it might be fairly straightforward stuff, just getting somebody to assemble a lot of basic information. I use my simplistic example of the culverts, you know, doing a culvert survey. You know, if nothing else, if you were at least reasonably certain that if you said yes to somebody, there's not a choke point, doesn't go, you know, twelve to eighteen to twenty-four to thirty to thirty-six, down to twelve, well, clearly, when all that water gets to that last twelve, it's gonna back up. You can't give somebody a permit because there's a plug there. That might be enough.
If we were, yeah, if we were to get involved in the process and everybody agreed to fund a hydrologist through your organization, what kind of a timeframe or what would be have to happen here? In other words, if we fund this, do we have to put our drainage board back together in order to effectively use that process?
Yes, the authority in, in, the authority that's in code right now is set up for counties to be the permitting authority.
Okay, so if we get back into that business, so to speak-
So you'd have to get back into the business.
Right, in order for this to work, we have to get back into business, we have to possibly fund this position, or have a coalition that funds this position through your office. Then there's that up-to-speed time where he goes out and looks at all these culverts and, and has additional information, he can make a decision on every application that comes through every county. Is that a one-year, two-year process for him to have that data available, or is that, you know, "I can figure it out in, you know, six months"?
Figured out on the fly.
Or on the fly.
I don't know what that would take. This was a, a, was and still largely is more of a concept that seems to be, there was some interest in it. It kinda waned when, when the task force went away. Visiting earlier this month with, with Representative Hawley, and he's telling me about the meeting here, I'm like, "Oh, okay, well, we could boot that thing up." I think, I, I would come back to Spencer's original query of you, what would it take to get you back involved? This is one idea.
I have a question regarding that.
Second, we do have a ten o'clock scheduled. We want them to stick around, we talk to them after our ten o'clock.
Can I make one quick comment?
I, I know you're on the schedule, but just a real quick comment. The, the only reason, reason for this discussion, back when we were going through it, there's, as we discussed how to manage water, if you have an ordinance, the county manages, if you don't, it goes back to common law. And the common law issue is you gotta talk to your neighbor next to you that you're gonna drain on, and that's it. And that's all the common law addresses. And I, I think it's important you guys get back in. I hope we can just start the conversation, answer all your questions, and, and get Bob and Mr. Hill involved in it, and, and see if there's something at a state statute level we need to do, or if it's something you can work out locally with your counties, but I just hope we can get this discussion started, so.
Can I make one comment on the state statute in case Spence can't stay? Because I, I heard everybody say, ever since I've been on the commission, I wasn't here when the drainage ordinance was rescinded, but if there is a liability issue for counties on that, that could be addressed by a state statute, and I don't know if that's been looked at, because that would be hugely helpful.
And we did have that discussion a lot, yeah.
Okay. Sorry to cut you off, we have a scheduled conference call we have to take.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, it's, uh, ten o'clock executive session, one dash two-five dash two, parentheses, four, contract negotiations. Motion. And a motion to second go executive session, all those in favors?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
I don't like to miss meetings if possible, but.
Could you be gone for, for the canvas?
I would not necess- I would not need to be here for that. So if you wanted to have the regular meeting on the sixth and the canvas on the seventh. Or yeah, on the eighth, I'm sorry, on the eighth, not the seventh. The seventh would be nothing, that's too soon. Kristin needs a day after the election to get everything ready. So, regular meeting on the sixth and the canvas only on the eighth.
Eighth is Friday?
Is a Thursday.
Thursday.
That's what I would like to do, I guess, but that's.
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
And that's election day, but that really doesn't matter.
It doesn't affect us really.
Yeah, okay, I will plan that on the, that accordingly. The final report of the Brookings Affordable Housing Task Force was included in your packet. Commissioner Krugman had mentioned at the last meeting to include that, so you all had a copy of that. That was included with my report. We got the official letter, I think at the last meeting, we discussed the, the Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Initiative payment that we're getting, oh, just over eighty-eight hundred dollars for Brookings County. That official letter from the governor was included with my report. We received a letter from Historic Preservation Commission, they're reaching out to all of the, the residents and businesses in the Central Historic District about decorating for the holidays, as the courthouse is in that district. They're looking at, because that's kind of the central, central portion with the Arts Council building there, they're asking to, for us to do some, maybe some different lighting and whatnot on the courthouse grounds. And we've never done that in the past, we've never really done any exterior lighting. Since this, Michelle has actually gone down and there's a very large wreath that seems to be working downstairs, and we could maybe, you know, get together some things that we have, albeit the lights that we have downstairs, I can't trust that they will stay on for the duration of the season, would be my only concern with things that we've had laying around for a while. So is this something that you're interested in doing? I mean, we've talked to John and Tom, and you know, they'd be willing to do a little, some things here and there. I, I'm not saying lights around every window or anything too extravagant, but is it something that, do you want to just, us just to use what we've got and hope that they come on or not do anything at all?
Well, this is my opinion only, but I'm not inclined to spend money to do it.
Okay.
So, if we, if we have stuff that will work, I mean, there, even if you buy something new, there's no guarantee it'll last through the season. So, you know, you start and it's lit, and the guys are willing to put it up, then I would say go ahead, otherwise.
Okay.
And I'm inclined to say, and, and it's the Festival of Lights that they're looking at, which is nine days from now. I, I just think we don't have time to do it and do it so it'd look nice, and if next year we want to do something like this, we put it on our calendar earlier and give ourselves time to get it done before the Festival of Lights. But we've got nine days and part of that's going to be Thanksgiving.
Yeah, and we'll see what, using what we have, we can see what we can get done in the time that we have, just so there's maybe something, like I said, we, we typically don't do anything on the exterior of the building, so.
Well, we sure don't want to mess up how it looks.
So, the, the other, the last letter that was included with my report was an invitation to a CAFO Information and Dialogue Forum. That's coming up on Thursday, the thirtieth, it's at ten o'clock, it's down in Sioux Falls at the Public Library. If you have to, it looks like my staff report might have gotten cut off, you have to resp- RSVP. There was a deadline on here, see if I can find it. I don't think there was maybe a, oh, by, by November twenty-first. So, if that's something anybody is interested in, in going to, let me know and I can RSVP for you.
Who is sponsoring that?
Dakota Rural Action.
That's what I thought, okay.
No, I will not be going.
No?
No.
No?
I, I did think, and, and I am not going, but I wondered if, for information's sake, could, if there'd be anybody from planning and zoning that, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Stacy, on that June date, could you tell me what time I'd like to put that in my calendar for canvassing?
That'll be a, just a regular meeting, eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty for canvassing?
Yeah, and it'll be the regular meeting as well, that day.
Oh, I meant, I meant to say the November eighth date, I'm sorry, what time would the canvass vote?
The November eighth date, we could do just regular eight-thirty, does that work for everybody, just to have it as a regular meeting for the canvas only? Yep. Okay, that works for you, Kristin? Okay. And then there was a packet of information that I handed out. Commissioner Miller had forwarded on the two thousand eighteen, an email about the two thousand eighteen Juvenile Detention Services contract, there's a two percent increase, that needs, they want that done and back to them by the fifteenth. And Vicky did hand it to me actually this morning, so we have it now in our hands, so I can put that on the December fifth agenda. I don't know if there was anything else, but there'll be a two percent increase over, over this year's fees for that. There is an email from Third Circuit Court Administrator Jenny Hamrich about doing some minor remodeling over at the courthouse. It would be removing a wall between the new or the circuit judges, and then I think where Sheriff Beitler, Deputy Beitler's offices, is that correct, Marty? And I think Jenny's, has spoken with both Sheriff Stanwick and Deputy Beitler about doing this. I think there's a little map that was included in that report about taking out that wall to make that space a little more user-friendly, along with a quote of approximately forty-three hundred dollars. We do have another project in the hopper over there, and that's installing those doors for security, that was going to get done yet this year, we can't do both projects, we don't have the budget to do both before the end of the year. And Jenny had indicated that they would like this one done first, so there is budget to do, there would be some budget in the building, the three oh one fund to do this project. If, if the commission is okay with it, we can move forward in doing this this year, and then the doors, probably the. And that's Election Day, but that really doesn't matter.
It doesn't affect us really.
Okay. I will plan that on the, that accordingly. The final report of the Brookings Affordable Housing Task Force was included in your packet. Commissioner Krogman had mentioned at the last meeting to include that, so you all had a copy of that. That was included with my report. We got the official letter, I think at the last meeting, we discussed the, the Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Initiative payment that we're getting, oh, just over eighty-eight hundred dollars for Brookings County. That official letter from the governor was included with my report. We received a letter from Historic Preservation Commission. They're reaching out to all of the, the residents and businesses in the Central Historic District about decorating for the holidays. As the courthouse is in that district, they're looking at, because that's kind of the central, central portion with the, the Arts Council building there. They're asking to, for us to do some, maybe some different lighting and whatnot on the courthouse grounds. And we've never done that in the past. We've never really done any exterior lighting. Since this, Michelle has actually gone down, and there's a very large wreath that seems to be working downstairs. And we could maybe, you know, get together some things that we have, albeit the lights that we have downstairs, I can't trust that they will stay on for the duration of the season, would be my only concern with things that we've had laying around for a while. So, is this something that you're interested in doing? I mean, we've talked to John and Tom, and you know, they'd be willing to do a little, some things here and there. I, I'm not saying lights around every window or anything too extravagant, but. Is it something that, do you want to just, us just to use what we've got? And hope that they come on or not do anything at all?
Well, this is my opinion only, but I'm not inclined to spend money to do it.
Okay.
So, if we, if we have stuff that will work, I mean, there, even if you buy something new, there's no guarantee it'll last through the season. So, you know, you start and it's lit, and the guys are willing to put it up, then I would say go ahead, otherwise.
Okay.
And I'm inclined to say, and, and it's the Festival of Lights that they're looking at, which is nine days from now. I, I just think we don't have time to do it and do it so it'd look nice. And if next year we want to do something like this, we put it on our calendar earlier and give ourselves time to get it done before the Festival of Lights. But, we've got nine days, and part of that's going to be Thanksgiving.
Yeah, and we'll see what, using what we have, we can see what we can get done in the time that we have. Just so there's maybe something, like I said, we, we typically don't do anything on the exterior of the building, so.
Well, we sure don't want to mess up how it looks.
So, the, the other, the last letter that was included with my report was an invitation to a CAFO Information and Dialogue Forum. That's coming up on Thursday, the 30th. It's at 10 o'clock. It's down in Sioux Falls at the Public Library. If, you have to, looks like my staff report might have gotten cut off. You have to resp, RSVP. There was a deadline on here. See if I can find it. RSVP. I don't think there was maybe a, oh, by, by November 21st. So, if that's something anybody is interested in, in going to, let me know, and I can RSVP for you.
Who is sponsoring that?
Dakota Rural Action.
That's what I thought, okay. No, I will not be going.
No?
No.
No?
I, I did think, and, and I am not going, but I wondered if, for information's sake, could, if there'd be anybody from planning and zoning that. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Stacy, on that June date, could you tell me what time I'd like to put that in my calendar for?
That'll be a, just a regular meeting, 8:30.
8:30 for canvassing?
Yeah, and it'll be the regular meeting as well, that day.
I meant to say the November 8th date. I'm sorry, what time would we canvass votes?
Date. We could do just regular 8:30. Does that work for everybody, just to have it as a regular meeting for the canvas only? Yep. Okay. That works for you, Kristin? Okay. And then there was a packet of information that I handed out. Commissioner Miller had forwarded on the 2018, an email about the 2018 Juvenile Detention Services Contract. There's a 2% increase. That needs, they want that done and back to them by the 15th. And Vicky did hand it to me actually this morning, so we have it now in our hands, so I can put that on the December 5th agenda. I don't know if there was anything else, but there'll be a 2% increase over, over this year's fees for that. There is an email from Third Circuit Court Administrator Jenny Hamrich about doing some minor remodeling over at the courthouse. It would be removing a wall between the new, or the circuit judges, and then I think where Sheriff Beitler, Deputy Beitler's offices. Is that correct, Marty? And I think Jenny has spoken with both Sheriff Stanwick and Deputy Beitler about doing this. I think there's a little map that was included in that report about taking out that wall to make that space a little more user-friendly, along with a quote of approximately forty-three hundred dollars. We do have another project in the hopper over there, and that's installing those doors for security. That was going to get done yet this year. We can't do both projects. We don't have the budget to do both before the end of the year. And Jenny had indicated that they would like this one done first. So, there is budget to do, there would be some budget in the building, the 301 fund, to do this project. If, if the commission is okay with it, we can move forward in doing this this year, and then the doors, probably the first part of next year, is what I would recommend. But we do not have budget, enough budget to do both projects in one year. So, we're going to try to get one done. But again, that's all, if the commission is willing to.
Did we have quotes on the doors?
That was approximately thirty-eight hundred dollars.
I mean, it'd be nice to do both these, the same project at the same time, but. Murray?
There should be, you know, I got the court security grant. Now I can't remember what it was. It was half of that door project is in.
Okay.
Because I applied for that last year and got 50% of the door project by the, by the judge's chamber. And then there's $2,000 that is in general fund that, for the clerk of court's office. When we talked about putting those metal shades in, then we did nothing. So, there's $2,000 there that we need to do something with too. I need you to modify that, because that money was supposed to go to clerk of courts for that project, but. So, there should be $6,000 somewhere, I think.
Your contractors, you got a quote from Halman, and you got a quote from?
Cub Construction for the doors, two different people.
And what, what we could do here. It'd be nice to get them both done at the same time, being they're in the construction.
Well, we've got two different contractors, budget, or estimates though. We, we can't.
Might only involve, might not only involve another project that the judges, that is, that I'm giving our next.
And where's the deputy going to go?
Well, just, he, he's got a laptop, he can just deal with that. Basically, what that room was for is if there was a, something.
Happen in court, he'd have a place to take a person and, and confine him there until the rest of the correctional officers came or, or whatever. So, to be honest with you, we don't use that room very often, so it's fine to give the space up.
And that same purpose that you just said, you could use the jury room for if you needed to, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. We had the cameras in there, so if he wanted to go and view something that's happening on the other floors, he could go in there and view that, you know, and we can, we can just put that on his laptop, and he can view from his laptop too.
So, would it be possible to get both these companies, or construction companies, to look at the, both projects together and give us a estimate? So, it'd be apples to apples?
Now that these dollars are out there, no. I don't, now that this is public information, I don't think so.
Okay.
Neither one by themselves is that big a deal.
No.
So, I, I, if, if the courts prefer to have this one done first, then let's just do this one first.
And I can work with, I can work with Jenny, and I mean, I know we've got the project on the clerk windows too that we're still, you know, needing to address, but between her and I, we can work with, just get them done. I mean, the money is there. It's just there in separate years, but we're so close to different years at this point that they'd be done. One would probably be done here in December, and one probably in January. We want to, these guys, they want to get it done during, there's winter months when they want inside work now anyway. So, the push is going to be to get it done during the winter months, so. Okay. And Commissioner Pierce had forwarded me an email that I gave, put in your packet about this Made in America, 3M and Walmart Made in America event. It's next, it's December 5th. It's the Tuesday of a commission meeting. But again, she had indicated that it's, and it's an important event, that we might want to have some, somebody there in attendance taking part of, in that possibly. But again, it is during a commission meeting next, at the next commission meeting, so. No, if there's any ideas?
Is this, we need a representative from the county, are you saying, to point somebody to go, or?
I don't, I think it would probably be nice to have somebody from the county there, if possible.
Suggestions?
Job, I'd have to think about that.
You know, I, I wonder, I would be really interested in this information, because I think this is an impact in Brookings. And, but we do have a commission meeting. We already have our agenda, and, and I don't think it's possible for, for us to do that. But I, I wonder if it'd be possible, and I'd be willing to, to do the response if, if y'all were interested, if everybody else feels like they would be interested, to, to send back to Jim an email saying that we'd be interested in knowing these things, and maybe even seeing the facility. I don't know how you feel about that, but we can't do it that day, and we really appreciate the invitation. And would there ever be another opportunity for the commission to come out and, and meet with him? Do you have an interest in that, or is that just an interest that I have?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I'll, I'll send an email back explaining to him what our dilemma is, and, and saying we'd be interested in knowing what, about this. I think this is a good thing, so.
Okay.
Would it be appropriate to designate some staff person to attend on our behalf?
You could do that. I don't know who that would be.
Possibly Laura.
Possibly Laura.
And then give us a report in addition to this letter, asking for that, but at least we would have a representative there.
Well, but if, if Leann, if Commissioner Pierce is willing to email them and tell them that we're interested in this, and we'd like to do this at a different time, I don't think it's necessary to have a representative there.
I don't either.
I don't think it will be. So, I don't think, I don't think that's necessary.
The next thing I had was a letter from Bennett County, kind of seeking, I think, just maybe some support from other counties. You know, they have a lot of tax-exempt trust lands, and they've been having the conversations. And here, this particular commissioner is going to be setting up a meeting with Senators Thune and Round and Representative Noem about this very issue. And I think it's looking, if there's other interest in attending that event, although beings where Bennett County is down in Martin, South Dakota, I don't know if it'll be anywhere near, I don't think it'll be near us for, for driving purpose to maybe attend, but if there's any type of support that you want to send to Bennett County in their endeavors here, let me know that. And again, this is something too, that if, if you want to do that, if we want to send a letter or something, I could put this on for our next agenda as well. But they'd reached out to the counties across the state, in looking at this.
This was brought up at state convention also.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't affect us, but it affects county close to us. It affects Moody, and it certainly affects Zebot County. And I, I think that the counties should stand together on this and, and give them some support. So, I don't think it would hurt to do a letter in support of what they're trying to do.
Okay. I could draft something and have that at our next meeting. And a couple other, just a couple last things that I had handed out. The Brookings Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan Update Project has been selected to be forwarded on to FEMA, which is a good thing. We received that letter late last week. I believe you were all forwarded an email, which I included in your packet this morning, from Brookings County resident Barb Tellkamp regarding ordinance 2017-02, I think the one that we just had the first reading on. And then Randy Hansen had emailed me yesterday and wanted me to make sure that the commission was invited to the, it's not a groundbreaking, it's a wall-breaking event for the Farmstead in White. It's the old White Healthcare Center. That wall-breaking event will be on Friday, December 1st, at 4 o'clock. Friday, December 1st at 4 o'clock. And then just the other things. Again, we're closed Thursday, Friday this week due to Thanksgiving. You have your eight-county meeting next Wednesday. The mayor's holiday celebration on December 7th. I believe you probably have already received your individual invitations for that. And then we are planning our city, county, and state holiday potluck here for the building on this December 13th. So, if you have any other questions of me, otherwise I will be leaving.
Thank you. Can you go back to Agenda Letter E? First reading of ordinance number 2017-05. Excuse me. An ordinance authorizing rezoning of South Dakota Soybean Processors Track 3B in Northwest Quarter of Section 24, Township 110 North, Range 51 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota, Volga Township. From an agricultural district to a commercial industrial district. The next second reading and public hearing will be held at 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. An ordinance rezoning of South Dakota Soybean Processors Track 3B in Northwest Quarter of Section 24, Township 110 North, Range 51 West of the 5th Prime Meridian. Lost it. From Brookings County, South Dakota, Volga Township, from an agricultural district to a commercial industrial district. Whereas the South Dakota Soybean Processors LLC made an application to the Brookings County Zoning Board to rezone property from agricultural district to commercial industrial district. Whereas the Brookings County Zoning Board approved the application to rezone property on November 7th, 2017. Whereas South Dakota Codified Law 11-2-30 requires the Brookings County Commission to adopt or reject the change. Therefore, be it ordained by Brookings County, South Dakota, that the following property be rezoned from agricultural district to a commercial industrial district. South Dakota Soybean Processors Track 3B in Northwest Quarter of Section 24, Township 110 North, Range 51 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota, Volga Township. Okay. We'll revisit that on 19th of December. Moving on. Action to remove agreement number 17-75 from the table, tableed on October 17th, 2017.
Make a motion to remove from the table.
I have a motion, a second, move from the table. Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action to approve agreement number 17-75, a software license agreement between B Pro Incorporated Pierre, South Dakota, and Brookings County.
So moved.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Chris, are you okay with everything with this? You feel comfortable with these guys and everything after our discussion? Okay.
No further discussion. Call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter G. Action to approve agreement number 17-80, an agreement between Brookings County and South Dakota Game Fish and Parks to enhance and maintain the indoor pristle range at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Leave background.
Yeah, this is an agreement here to, to receive grant funds from Game Fish and Parks, or to be administered from Game Fish and Parks. And they will reimburse up to 75%, or excuse me, 75% of an actual cost. So, we will spend the money, pay for it, submit the bill to them. Jordan from GFMP then will authorize it, approve it, and send, reimburse us 75% of that bill. So, it's a great opportunity for us to continue to keep maintenance up for that facility, and also to help share costs, obviously, so it's not our own, it's all of our responsibility. Because the maintenance for that range is, is quite high to keep that range safe and secure and healthy for all the people that use it, so.
I, I just had a couple of questions. The, the contract provides over a 20-year period that they'll pay up to seventy thousand twelve dollars. So, which works out to be about thirty-five hundred dollars a year. Are we thinking?
For 20 years? I thought it was per year.
It is per year. Okay, so it says in the agreement, because I had thought that's what we talked about before, but it says per project, and it does, and, and it talks about the 20 years in here. So, could you show me where it says per year?
Well, I did talk to him, because I had a bunch of changes on this, because this was still through the Outdoor Adventure Center. And the 20 years, when I asked him about that, was for the life of the building. And so, it was to make sure that the building, the useful life right here in Section 9 that says 20-year useful life of the facilities, is because of the money that they had put in already. So, that was why they wanted the 20 years of useful life. I did not see the 20.
If, if you look at item, it's under state, it's number two state, and then it's subpart one, make cash reimbursement to county for 75% of the total eligible project cost, up to a maximum of seventy thousand twelve dollars. And I'm glad to hear what Commissioner Krogman's saying, because I had thought that we were talking 70 a year, and, and this reads 70 over the 20-year period, because you, then you look back, and, and how the project is defined, is that over that 20-year period. I just want to be clear what it is that we're doing.
Once again, when I asked him about the 20 years, the 20 years for the life of the building, it wasn't conditioned on this money through 20 years.
I'm wondering if that, it's, it's the very top of page 3 or 4. If that could be, make a cash reimbursement to the county for 75% of the total eligible project cost per year, up to a maximum. And that's what you're telling me, that you guys have negotiated, right?
Well, yeah, and then there's, it's a, we have to reapply every year.
Okay.
For this, and so it starts June 1st. And so, there was not an application starting June 1st before that, and so that's why we're getting the application in now. And then it runs until
One year.
May 31st, and then we have to re-up prior to that again to keep going.
So, it's an annual.
And it should say that in the contract.
It, it does say that is, it does have a termination, and it does state that we have to reapply. Well, that's the 30-day termination, but it, but the, but it says that this contract is null and void on May 31st, 2018. So, this seventy thousand, one, seventy thousand twelve dollars and 50 cents is for the calendar year, up to that amount. And the 20 years useful life is just because of their money that they've already put into the building. It's not that money over 20 years. But, that's what I asked him about, and that's what, how he clarified it to me. It is a little bit vague about that, but I mean, that's what I, jumped out at me as well. So, when I asked him about that, he just said that the 20-year is the useful life of the facilities, being that they'd already pumped money into this facility before they want to have some sort of safety net, so. to have some sort of safety net, so, but it isn't 20, it isn't a 20-year increment. But I mean, I could talk to him and have him add that language to make cash reimbursement to county of 75 percent of the total eligible project cost up to a maximum of per year, if you wanted me to.
That would be grand, if you all think you've got it taken care of. It just doesn't say that in there. And where did it say the annual reapplication? I just missed that, I'm sorry.
I'd have to, I mean, this was on my conversation with him real fast last week so we could get this on the agenda, so.
And I realize we want to get this taken care of.
It's on what?
I think it's on page one, one or two. Oh, that one just says it concludes on May 30th.
On page one, item number two?
No, no, page one, item one, number A, or letter A.
So we can start this as soon as they receive it, and then we have until May 31st to be
reimbursed, at which time then we can reapply, and they'll continue to do this if they get the funds. The funds actually come from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, so they got to get the approval from them, and they handle that process for us, and that's why, we made this application probably two months ago to try to get this going, and they got the approval from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Now, Jordan from U.S., or from Game Fish and Parks has put this together, and to do that, and they said as soon as we get this signed, go ahead and start making improvements. But he did tell us we'll have to approve again next year.
And when this ends in May, on May 30th of 2018, when does our application for the one that'll start June 1st of 18, when does that application have to be in?
It sounded like it took a couple of months, so it wouldn't be a bad idea to, a couple of months ahead of time to put an application in again.
So would it be appropriate to say in our, if we get a word again in our next contract, we could maybe fix these couple of things?
Yes, but we know what
Yep, okay.
And time is of the essence because we've got to have those filters.
And then my last question, and I know this deals with the next agreement, but they go hand in glove, is when, in the next agreement where it says that Game Fish and Parks, that we have to have a schedule for the public use of the facility that Game Fish and Parks agrees to, how do you see that working? If we enter into this agreement, then they get to have a veto power over what our public hours are going to be?
No, I think basically, what's reasonable is what they've said in all my conversations with everybody here, is we can charge a fee, it doesn't have to be free, but it has to be a reasonable fee, you know? So if a reasonable fee would be $100 an hour, that's not reasonable to them, but, you know, $15 an hour, reasonable type of thing, that's fine. And they have the ability to join as a member, as long as they have that ability to do that. And then that there's hours available for those members and for somebody as a public to come in and shoot, and those hours are posted, which they would be on our website, and that's what we provide an RSO and allow that. Reasonable, they said, as long as you don't close it and say, okay, we're giving you two hours out of the week to use it, that's not going to be reasonable. Even if we had to close it for a full day, but during the week we had it open four or five days out of the week, that seems to be reasonable too. So I'm comfortable with it for all intensive purposes, talking with everybody, I haven't heard anything different, so.
And what we have now is very acceptable.
Yes.
In my discussions with them too, they're not going to police us on these issues, but they want eventually, if we could have posted hours that show that we are open to the public, that would suffice for them too.
And we do.
Yes, and we are in compliance right now.
And I knew that was all going to be part of our agreement, but this agreement in item number two says they have to approve the public hour schedule, so, okay.
And that's, and again, I don't think, right now, if we don't turn around and drastically change what we have, we're fine from the communication we've got.
And he stated, working with Ryan and Stephanie, he was okay with what we have right now, so, but it is in there, and I did question that, but they're giving us money, so I guess they want a little control to make sure that we're not just zipping things up, so.
You know, and I think going back to that prior agreement, thinking about that 20 years, I think, you know, they've invested quite a bit of money upfront for the public ability to do that, and we can't agree to this for two years, use their money, and then turn around and close the range to the public. That's where the 20 years says, okay, we got to keep this open to the public for the next 20 years, so we have to make that commitment, we are bound by that, that if we don't get this thing three years down the road, that we can't now close it to the public, from their initial investment, we still have a 20-year obligation for the life of the facility.
And that was what was conveyed to me with the 20 years.
Right, and just in our next one, because we'll be doing another contract
And I've made those changes.
Very shortly, we can fix these things, so.
Yep.
Okay, back to Letter G, action to approve agreement number 17-80, we'll have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
So moved, we've had a motion.
Yep, there's a motion and a second. Yep, Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter H, action to approve agreement number 17-81, a public use agreement between Brookings County and South Dakota Game Fish and Parks regarding the indoor pistol range at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center.
Move approval.
Second.
They have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter I, action to approve agreement number 17-82, a Minnehaha County Jail Bed Per diem contract.
Move, second.
They have a motion and a second. Marty, do you have any?
Formality, they have no room, but if they ever did get room and I need to use it, then I'm locked in on a price, otherwise it's more.
What is our daily rate right now?
What's that?
What's our daily rate?
Ours is $65.
And they're 96.
Well, they have a lot nicer facility.
Housekeeping, valet, parking.
But if I ever take in, if I ever get to the point that we do an expansion, our price will go up too. Because I don't, I can't hold anybody for anybody else, so that's why it's still at $65.
Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter J, action to approve agreement number 17-83, a request to fill vacancy for a deputy sheriff's position to begin January 1, 2018.
Approval.
Second.
They have a motion and a second. Marty, I know we worked on this during the budget, you had some shared costs on how to finance this.
Yes, because we didn't, we didn't get our cops grant. I checked, I hadn't heard anything, so when you don't hear things, you always expect the worst than it was, is that they had a map, it shows what states and what areas got the grant. There's three, there was only 200 awards nationwide, so there was three awarded in the state of South Dakota, and of course, we were not one of them, so now we go back to something that I've, that we've got with finance on how to fund it, but it's all worked
Other questions? Hearing none, call the roll.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter K, action to authorize a finance office to publish a notice of supplemental budget for Fund 248.
Move approval.
Second.
They have a motion and a second.
Sorry, we have gotten more revenue in for the 24/7 fund, but we've already spent the budget in supplies, so we do have the revenue available, but it's just not in the budget, so we have to do this hearing to get it over to the budget so we can spend
Call the roll, please.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on, Deputy State's Attorney report.
We did hire a new Deputy State's Attorney, Tyler Mattson, he was here, he had a little juvenile emergency, so that's where he is right now, so he's up and running and working on ordinances, and we are busy thanks to Sheriff's Office and the Brookings Police Department, so just staying busy and looking forward to the holiday break, although I have to get ready for Court Monday, so.
Commissioner reports and discussion. Leanne?
On November 7th, as Mr. Hill said, we had county planning and zoning. At that meeting, the county planning and zoning board appointed Daryl Nelson to serve on the Joint Jurisdiction Committee. And then the city planning and zoning board that same night met, and they appointed Greg Fargan to serve on the Joint Jurisdiction Committee. And I'm going to just skip down to November 20th for a minute and do all the joint jurisdiction stuff at one time, then we had our meeting yesterday to talk about and to select the four remaining committee members, those would be the two township members and the two at-large members. And the committee appointed Dwayne Knutson and Rob Hexum to serve as the two township representatives, and the committee appointed L. Hooton and Scott Moore to serve as the two at-large, and our next meeting will be December 13th, and we're starting to move forward. Do you have a question on that, Steph? Okay. And then on November 8th, met with Bob and Richard and Terry, we were going to do ordinance revision, but to be honest, we spent that whole meeting talking about proper procedures to be using when we're having planning and zoning meetings. And then on November 13th, met with the city master comprehensive advisory committee, again as the representative from the county, and they are hoping that that will go to public hearing maybe in February or March, the city's getting close on that. On November 13th, I also attended the 4-H recognition night out at OAC, and y'all are to be congratulated on what appeared to me to be a really nice event that was held out there, and it looked like people were enjoying the facility and everything was working well. Not to say that we don't have things going on, but it really did look nice in those walls that y'all put up, worked well for dividing the archery range, so. I got a call on November 15th and met with Anna over at the clerk's office, and she just wanted to talk about those windows at the clerk's office. And I think I get a real sense of frustration from the clerk's office about how poorly those windows work for the clerks. Mind you, I have been saying since we did the remodel project how poorly they work for attorneys and the public, but that's because you're always standing on the other side. But from the clerk's office inside, she just wanted to show how bad that was, and I hadn't realized some of those things, and we talked about some solutions, and then she's going to go back to that committee that we've got over there that's looking at courthouse issues, and I said, you guys just have to come up with a plan. I did say that we had discussed the fact that they wanted to bump that out and close that off, and I said, I don't think that's going to get approved. I think there are some other solutions that we should be looking at, but it needs to come back through that committee, and we did talk about some things. What they really did is on the clerk's side, when they, when we did the remodel, we just, I think we decided not to spend any money on their side, so they don't have appropriate counter space to be able to work the public. They don't have, what they did is they cut off pieces that were from the old office and stuck them underneath the countertop, so they don't have storage room for papers and files and forms and things like that. Some of that just needs to be cleaned up, and maybe it was just a matter of living with it for a while, but they need to come up with a plan and come back. The windows are the real problem on the other issue, and that's with attorneys and the public when they're trying to talk to the clerks, it's just really impossible to do that. And there's an issue with the acoustics in that hall, which I really hadn't really thought about that too much. It might be that putting some acoustical tile on that little area in front of the door might take care of that, but I don't know, I'm not an engineer, and I said we need to have somebody that's a sound person come look at that, but that's what that committee's there for, to bring us back recommendations on that. She did say she would be happy to show it to any of the rest of the commission that would like a chance to see how all that's working. Okay. Then on the 15th, had a meeting with BEDC, did ordinance review that day, again, Terry and Richard and Loken myself, and we're moving through that supplement and trying, I think we actually made some progress and got some things done, we're trying to move that along. Attended the membership mixer at the Alumni Center for the Chamber on the 16th, and yesterday went to that governmental and meeting legislative luncheon with the rest of you, and that, of course, was very interesting, and that would be my report.
Commissioner Burley?
If I can read all this off here, November 9th, I went to the Drug Court graduation, that was very well-attended, it was a packed house in the courtroom. I've never seen that many people in that place, but it worked well and it was well-attended. November 11th, I
Commissioner Bartley, you should come on Monday.
What's that?
Just come on a Monday morning.
Only as an observer. Okay. November 11th was the Veterans Day celebration, I attended that, it was well-attended also, they did a marvelous job, Craig Shitter gave the address, and there was hardly a D I I in the place. November 13th, the Mental Health Task Force met again, and we had some issues we went over. November 15th, met with ICAP, everything's proceeding as usual with ICAP. On the 16th, I also attended the SDSU Chamber After Five event. And yesterday, had three different meetings, inner governmental chamber meeting yesterday morning and luncheon, joint jurisdiction that Commissioner Pierce had covered at 2:00, and then East Central Behavioral Health at 5:30, so that concludes my report.
Be okay. Can you tell us where East Central is at on a new director?
Right now, we're still covering the three different tracks, one, hiring new directors, second, partnering with another community-based mental health organization or take over by that organization, and the third would be a partnership with a medical facility to manage the facility, much like United Living Center has. And those three are being vetted right now, and the board will get together and have a retreat and go over all the three. We have a series of questions that we've asked all those providers, including ourselves to ourselves, how we would promote that facility to move forward. Last night at the meeting, we had a meeting with the school district and their counselors, and that was rather enlightening to find out what their needs are and what's changed in how we represent ourselves with them, and so there's some work to be done, there's some protocols that probably have to be gone over that weren't there before as far as treating the clients and the families. You know, there's always people working in different areas and they don't communicate well sometimes, so possibly a protocol for that, so hopefully by the end of January, we will have made a decision and moved in a particular direction. We do have a group from Avera, I'll just call it Avera Mental Health Group, who's coming up to do a complete evaluation of our facility, our operation, our finances, all at no charge to us, and will give us a report that we can use whether we select to work with them or not. So that's being scheduled right now for them to come up and hopefully do that in the next 20 to 30 days, or sooner if they've got their personnel online, so they would have three or four people come up and go through the facility for whatever time it takes to make those determinations, so I think that would be a valuable tool for us to have before we move forward. That answers your question? Okay.
All right, November 7th, Stephanie and I attended Archery Range Committee meeting at the OAC, very well thought, very well-attended. We have a lot of volunteers that are ready to get active in the Archery Range Committee, so very happy to see the turnout there, and we're going to continue that on, and there's a meeting tonight for the Archery Range Committee also for that. On the 9th, I was at the Drug Court graduation, again, very well-attended, a really neat program, and hopefully we will continue to turn out graduates as we move forward with that program, and I think it's well worth the investment, so. 13th, I was invited to Brookings School District Boundary Meeting. That was just to talk about county, school district, and where in the county, and different things like that, so gave my input on that. On the 16th, we met right before our Uh, on the 16th, um, we met, uh, right before our, uh, right before our BCA OAC Advisory Board meeting, we met with Emmett from Game Fish and Parks to finalize these agreements, and also start working on, uh, getting those offices constructed for where they're supposed to move into. He is still, uh, working through how to get that done with his group and his people that, uh, his higher-ups on how they wanna handle that. So we will be coming back to you with something here, hopefully in the near future, of how to get that office space finished and how we wanna do it, so. Um, and that will be, uh, probably a, a commission decision, uh, because of funding and how that will work. So we'll, we'll let you know more, go here, but we had that conversation. And then we did have the VCOAC Advisory Board meeting, and we are getting things accomplished. We're trying to meet every two to three weeks, uh, it's a two, two-hour meeting, so we are still continuing to work through it, but things are moving on, um, and moving forward, so a lot of positive, uh, stuff coming out of meetings, I will say that. A lot of people really excited, I think, about, uh, uh, turning the page and getting that going, so. And then the next, uh, one was, uh, the 20th, we had the intergovernmental meetings, um, and then the pre-legislative, and then Stephanie and I met with Robert to go over a few things at the OAC. And then moving forward here, uh, sheriff, um, I talked with, uh, Tim Reed, and wondering, uh, 1:00 on the 28th, if you'd be available to finalize our bylaws? So, all right, thank you. And then, um, let me see here, I will be out of town, um, on the 30th of November, and that night is a Brookings Health meeting. So I don't know if anybody else wants to take, where it's an ex officio, um, meeting, takes, starts at, uh, 5:00, and, and usually is done by 7:00. I know it'll be done by 7:00 because there's an SDSU women's game, and they usually take that in consideration. So, 'cause there's quite a few board members that are, uh, pretty, uh, strong SDSU fans. So, anyway, from 5:00 to 7:00, I will be out of town, um, 30th, 1st, and the 2nd, 3rd of December, so I don't know if anybody's, wants to step in, I will let them know that you'd be coming, so they'll know, if you're not, then I'll just let them know I won't be able to make it, so. It's up to anybody else wants.
I would be happy to go, but I have domestic abuse at, at 4:00, and I don't know that it'll be done by 5:00.
Well, anyway, somebody can let me know if they want to, if I don't hear from you.
I can go.
You wanna go? Okay, I will call and let them know that you're gonna be there, so. I think that's it, so.
Well, Ryan talked about most of what I have done, but November 7th was the VCOAC Archery Range Committee meeting. And, you know, the first one we had, didn't, we didn't have very many people present, but, uh, this one, we had several, and already from that meeting, volunteers have stepped up, and I had help painting the walls, and, and, uh, yesterday, there was a volunteer out there working on bows and arrows, and there's a lot of things to do in the archery range that have been deferred. So, and the, this is great that they're stepping up. November 8th, I went to the Extension Board meeting, and we discussed the move and the budget and the new storage that's going to be necessary. There was a question asked, is the commission giving you what you need? I stepped right up and said, of course we are. November 9th, um, I met, we met, I met with the RSOs and the company that was going to do the lead mining in the pistol range, and it was quite interesting. We went in there and, you know, in, in lanes one and two, you could see the lead pretty noticeably. In fact, they had shut those two, two down, but we dug down about six inches in other lanes, and there was quite a bit of lead. And so, and so they agreed that there probably was enough to mine, and it wouldn't cost us because they would just take the lead and that would be their payment. And they did the job, and they mined 19,000 pounds of lead out of there, so obviously there was, it, they, they kinda were thinking they needed 20, but they were happy with the 19, and so there will not be a bill to do that. At 1:00 that day, I attended the, the first drug court graduation. It was very touching. I would like to thank our state's attorney's office for the job that you guys have done. And I know that you worked hard to get that going, and I, I think it's a wonderful program. And I, I'm certain that our first graduate, she could not have been more articulate, and I'm certain that she gave those who are still in the program a lot of encouragement to continue on and do the hard work that it takes to be a graduate from that drug court. So I'd like to congratulate publicly everyone who was involved in that. On November 13th, I attended the recognition banquet, and it looked really nice in there. And that was kind of our big grand opening, if you will, for 4H in their new home. And I, I was really pleased with how it looked, and they had a good attendance there. November 16th was the meeting with GFNP and the OAC Advisory Board, I won't expound on that anymore. Yesterday, the intergovernmental meeting, and then the pre-legislative luncheon. I love that intergovernmental meeting, we all know what's going on all throughout the county, and it's, it's great. And then at 2:00, we met with Robert and kinda talked about our goals and expectations, and his goals.
I was just curious, only because I was involved in this part of the contact, has there been any conversation about having the Eastern representative, who said they would come and look at our archery range and give us ideas on programming and stuff, or are we still, still too soon to try to get that kinda thing going?
At, um, one of the things we met with Robert was kinda putting a plan together where we go from here now, and, uh, programming's gonna be a, a big, big portion of it, and so, um, we talked quite a bit about that, and I think as, tell, we can get all of our membership up to date, active, um, and get their cards, so we can get them in. Um, we, we, then we know who our volunteers are, and what we actually can pull off and different things, so. Probably a little early yet, but definitely a partnership we want to, um, create or continue, 'cause it already has been going.
Okay, on the 7th, uh, had a promotion, expand, 4H Promotion Expansion Committee meeting. Some of the focus, most of the focus was on, uh, how to reach the youth, um, social media, Facebook, Pinterest, there's a lot of different ideas out there. Some more promotion ideas, it was an open house event, once the offices are completed. Also, um, display case, um, possibly at the city-county building here, what 4H is, uh, and, uh, promoting at different, uh, businesses and stuff. Membership expansion ideas, um, there have come up with an idea, um, uh, for handicapped individuals, though, uh, showing livestock at achievement days. It's been done at national shows and stuff, but this will be an added, uh, added, uh, part to achievement days, possibly. So it sounded very positive. On the 9th, I had, uh, started with a pod training exercise at the East Fire Station. I involved, uh, Elkton School, Newbrook Schools, um, and it was, uh, conducted out of the East Fire Station, and it is, uh, um, it was evaluated, and it was, done a good job. Then at 1:00, attended the drug court commencement, uh, very proud of this individual, and, uh, like I, like, uh, Stephanie said, thanks to the state's attorney's office and everybody involved, uh, to make that possible. On the 13th, uh, had 4H, uh, recognition night, uh, very well attended, um, they had to bring in extra chairs and tables, and, uh, I sat down, a couple 4H shooting sports volunteers, and they're very excited, and, uh, they said this, uh, they're just excited with the facility and how it's gonna work, so. And then I did have, uh, a fireman's meeting, and some concerns were brought up to me. They had an elderly individual north of White, they had a search one evening, and the radio issue came up again. Also, there was concerns on who should have been in charge of the search up there, it was kinda disorganized, and, but fortunately, the individual was found, uh, but they had some concerns about that, uh, basically, who gets there and who takes charge? It goes back to your, um, your incident command system, so. On the 16th, I had a, uh, LAPC meeting out at Daktronics. One of their major, they had a presentation, it's how, if they have an incident at Daktronics, how they, uh, alert all their employees, what, uh, what different alert systems they have in place out there, and how it's all handled. Yesterday, you know, attended the intergovernmental meeting, uh, well-attended, and, uh, speakers are always entertaining. But, uh, I guess that's all, all that I have. Is there anything else that? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Thanks.
The motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We had that meeting.